Mr. Mollner?
Here.
Ms. Towe?
Here.
I would like to now ask everyone to stand. Please remove your hats. His Council President Rita Darrow leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Councilman Nick Mollner will lead us in a prayer.
(Inaudible)
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 Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are here gathered today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for freedom to embrace you, excuse, you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. Amen.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to, may I please ask if we can accept the financial report?
I move that, Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the financial report that we have received for the month of May.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post, and the motion passes. Next on our agenda, we're going to have a presentation this evening from Amy Boudinck from Summit County Public Health Department. Hi, Amy.
How is everybody?
Good.
Welcome, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here. I will be very brief, as it looks like you have a packed agenda. I just wanted to share with you that I am from Summit County Public Health. However, I represent a larger collaborative called First Things First, which is an initiative that identifies many agencies that have been facing children of Summit County. So several years before my time, my work at Summit County, a community needs assessment was conducted to identify barriers and assets. And from that, there have been working committees that have been developed to address these needs within the county, to look at education, health, and well-being. And so, as a culminating event, August is Kids Month. And so, throughout the month of August, we like to highlight all of the events and programs that look to address these particular areas of well-being and school readiness, with the final culminating event being on August 15th, the Summit Kids Expo down at the John S. Knight Center. So I just wanted to share with you a few of our highlights for that particular month, so you have an idea of what actually happens, if you're not as familiar. The first week is our Early Learning and Great Beginnings Week, and so we really focus on kindergarten readiness. So there's events and other activities that are really highlighting getting children ready to register for kindergarten and begin those first few weeks. There will be several affairs that are noted, and I will leave the website and information as I leave this evening. Our second week is Family Week, so we're highlighting events in the communities all around the county that are looking at, you know, fatherhood, healthy life course model and community services. So if there's a walk, or a run, or something that you'd like to highlight from this particular area, we are very happy to do so. Our third week is Child Wellness Week, and we focus on immunizations, physical health, health screenings, all of those things that children need to maintain to stay healthy throughout the year and as they begin going into school. And then our final week, which is a very significant one, is the Child Safety Week. And then this week, we will focus on bike helmets, car seat safety, so there'll be several events, and one of the larger ones is the awareness about safe routes to school. So how do children get to school, and what's the safest way for them to get there? So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you so much for your support and allowing us to provide information about this initiative, and any information that you can share within the community, we really appreciate. We're happy to highlight all of our events, and we've been doing so as we're hearing about them on our website. And so, our future, our website is First Things First, it's summitcountyfirstthingsfirst.com. So we are very excited, and I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Amy.
And I've left you goodies. So you'll see, that's what our, one of our major focuses this year was to provide a lot of this information and support and resources to our community libraries. So what you have in your hand is what we provided to all the libraries, to pass out to all the families and residents that come throughout the day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Can we clarify, one quick question? Anything that we would want to know, is the website, the Summit County?
Yes. First Things First.
FirstThingsFirst.com.
Yes, absolutely. So our calendar events lists by week, but we also have a regular traditional calendar for someone like me who needs to see everything laid out by the date. If there's additional events that you would like us to highlight or add into that calendar and begin to share out, we're very happy to do so as well.
So Mayor, do we have a link off of our website?
And that would be excellent, too.
No, we don't, that I'm aware of, but the gal who handles that's on vacation.
Okay.
Amy, could you provide me with some contact information?
Yes, I can leave my card, actually. Absolutely.
And I'll do that.
Okay. Wonderful.
All right.
Thank you so much. Now in the electronic era, paper is less and less.
Yes. All right, next, we have our comments by the public. We ask you to come to the front to make your comments, give us your name, your address, and try and keep your comments to five minutes, because we have a lot of people that want to speak this evening. I would like to mention before we get into public comments that many of the comments tonight are referencing ordinance number 52, 2015, which is an ordinance relating to snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles, and all-purpose vehicles. That particular ordinance at this time is being held at second reading. We're not moving forward with it, because there are pros and cons on this, and we're trying to get together with some of the people to reach a happy medium in between. So this will not be acted on tonight. Keep that in mind, and we still would like to hear what you have to say. So first on the list this evening is Dan Havelcheck. Dan?
My name is Dan Havelcheck. I've lived in the city for 52 years. Have a lot of experiences here, but that's not why I'm here to talk. John Kastmer has just gone under, has just gone under the knife for cancer, so if anyone would like to give him a prayer, I would appreciate it. He is the Longwood Manor President. I don't know the results, because I haven't talked to his wife. That's one note. The other notes I wanted to make mention, I had the distinct pleasure and really moving experience of going to Twinsburg for the latest wall showing in Twinsburg. It was very emotional. It was hard to keep from not having a tear in your eye. I saw the cost of freedom, right up front. I saw the cost of what it cost us, our children, and our brothers, sisters, uncles, aunts. A lot of people died so that we can do what we're doing today. I was very, very moved, and I'm sorry I'm moved now. I also saw and talked to Holly McTerry, a woman whose husband was gunned down in Twinsburg. It was a very emotional meeting with her also. She has held up very nicely, considering what she went through, and her children, of course. Again, this is the cost of freedom, ladies and gentlemen, whether it's freedom of safety or whether it's freedom of us living in a free society. There is a cost. Everybody kind of forgets it a lot of times. I was already almost recalled twice for Desert Storm 1 and Desert Storm 2. I'm a lifetime veteran. I've served my entire life in the Navy since I was 19. There are many other people who served much, much more time than I have. Also, we are a determined group that are trying to restore the Manor House. That man served in not one, but two world wars in combat. I'm very proud to say that I'm on that Longwood Manor Historical Society, trying to save that beautiful home of mine from the bulldozers. We're determined to do it, but we're looking for volunteers, we're looking for people who would help us do it. There's a lot of work there. We know we can get it done, if we just have enough help. We want to make that place a jewel of this city, because that man was so generous, because even after serving in not one, but two world wars, he donated 300 and some acres of land to the residents of Macedonia, all of us. We all owned that park, and because of it, the city was able to put up the rec center, was able to put up ball fields, soccer fields, was able to put a golf course in there. That man was as generous as you can be. He could have given it to his children, which he had one son. He could have sold it to a developer. Some people do that. But this man said, "No, I'm going to leave something for the residents of the City of Macedonia, to show them how much I love them and the city." Okay? Another man did that 2,000 years ago, and they nailed him to a cross. Thank God, Mr. Long wasn't nailed to a cross. But I feel strongly that all of you who missed that thing in Twinsburg, missed a very moving, eye-opening thing that showed all of you the cost of us in a free society, whether it's a woman, whether it's a man. They paid the ultimate price, and some of us who still serve in the military are willing to sacrifice ourselves if need be. As I said, I was myself recalled twice, almost recalled twice. I would have gone, but if you recall, Desert Storm 1 lasted 100 hours. We destroyed Saddam Hussein's army, and we threw him out of Kuwait. So it was a 100-hour war. I didn't have to go. And there was Desert Storm 2. I came close, but again, I didn't have to go. Any one of us who served a lifetime in the military is subject to recall for the rest of our natural lives, no matter how old we are, unless we're actually in firm and we can't do the job anymore. In case you don't know this, in the 2010 census, there's no less than 1,150 veterans who live just in Macedonia, just in this city. That doesn't include Twinsburg, it doesn't include Northfield, it doesn't include Sagamore Hills or Northfield Village, just in this city. There's 1,150 of us. Some served for lifetime, others served for a period of time. All served, and as that saying goes, some gave, some gave, some gave some, some gave all. Okay? The cost of our freedoms to come here and have a council, and have a mayor, and have all these other great benefits are because of what they paid and what some veterans still paid, whether they're subject to recall like I myself, or whether they served and are still being able to serve. Colonel Quigley over there in the corner is like, he's the only one I know of in this room that has put a lifetime of service to the United States of America. We're proud to do it, and we're proud to continue it. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Mike Gabriel. Mike?
Hello. Mike Gabriel, 883 Iroquois. I stood here almost one month ago to talk about the concerns relating to stormwater issues at my home. The storms on the weekend of June 26th, 27th were ultimately bad situations for many people in Ohio, myself included. At 4:30 in the morning, my wife woke me and the kids to start hauling furniture out of our family room due to heavy rains and water coming into our yard toward the house. With them doing that, I ran outside, placed sandbags, removing any debris that was being sent into my yard and toward the drains. I was out there until the storms subsided about 10:00 AM. All three of the catch basins in my yard were overwhelmed and overflowing. Water debris was being spewed toward the house and down the street into other people's properties. The rock ledge over, over which the water flows into my yard has become seriously eroded from years of water, which only compounds the problem, because now the flow of water and debris is even faster and stronger. I don't know if any of you are familiar with my property. I'm literally right below Sugar Bush Park, where the rock ledges are my backyard. In the recent edition of the News Leader, Mayor Cookton made mention of that storm, along with comments from Councillor Sylvia and Jan. The mayor noted that all the water from Sugar Bush drains toward the Gabriel property. I am here tonight to hopefully, hopefully achieve what is in the best interest of my family's health and safety, as well as the rest of the residents of Iroquois Trail. I again offer my property for the city to purchase, to build a retention basin that can be maintained by the city, or whatever needs to be, you assume feasible. This would benefit every homeowner on my street, and I would like to thank you all for your attention to this issue. With this being said, I do have another engagement I have to go to, and my canoe is double parked outside. Thank you again.
Very good. Mike, just so you know, Dave, if you would like to mention what's going to happen?
We've discussed at the council meeting tonight, we have another legislation for some water issues on, on Ledge Road, which is going to be passed tonight. We're going to be, I'll be offering a motion to, for directing the mayor to go out to secure an appraiser for the purposes of appraising your property. Of course, once the mayor determines what appraiser he wants to use and the cost of that appraisal, then, then he'll have to come back and we'll have a contract signed. So we're moving in that direction, because the mayor, Mr. Feeney from the Engineering Department, and everyone has concluded that there's really probably no other solution there, because of the, of the park and, and the lay of the land, other than to do this rather drastic motion. So we'll be making the motion, it'll pass tonight.
Thank you again.
There you go. You didn't fall down deaf ears.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have David Milstein. David?
Hi, my name's David Milstein. My address is 9450 Woodview Drive here in Macedonia. I'm here to speak on that ordinance number 52 on snowmobiles, dirt bikes, and ATVs. Understand it's not going to be voted on tonight, but I'd still like to say a few things about it. I did some research into existing ordinances that Macedonia has, and there's three in particular that one might suggest we consider enforcing to address nuisance or discourteous behavior with people that are riding dirt bikes or ATVs and not being courteous to their neighbors. The first is 509.0382. It says, "Making unreasonable noise which tends to incite an immediate breach of the peace." Seems to me that would be pretty appropriate if somebody's running around on ATVs adjacent to your property and, you know, they're just being obnoxious. That's disturbing the peace, by the way. There's also 331.30, 36, which pertains to exhaust noise or, it says, cracking or chattering noise by, you know, stepping on the throttle. And then finally, there's another noise ordinance in Macedonia, 337.27. That limits the noise to 95 decibels on an adjacent property using a specific scale. I don't know how that scale works. In addition, Ohio Revised Code 4519.2 actually limits the noise level to 82 decibels, which is significantly lower than Macedonia's ordinance. All of these are opportunities to enforce, take care of what might be construed as discourteous or disruptive behavior by a neighbor. You know, I ride my dirt bike on my property. I have more than an acre. I certainly don't ride at 250 feet away from my house. I think that's absolutely nuts, to require someone on their own property to stay 250 feet away from their own house, whether it be a dirt bike, an ATV, or a snowmobile. I really can't speak to the business of someone having to stay 500 feet away from an adjacent property. I could probably do that on my property, but again, I think this is awfully restrictive and a knee-jerk reaction to what I think is an enforcement issue. I would ask that you consider that the existing ordinance has been in place for 24 years without any change, without any problems. All of a sudden, now we have some people who may be behaving discourteously to some other neighbors, and it would seem to me that police enforcement would be the way to handle that, instead of legislation that's going to essentially penalize the other 10,499 of us residents. Thanks for letting me speak tonight.
Okay, next will be Kathy Loyah. Kathy?
Thanks for the opportunity. My name's Kathy Loyah, 9186 North Bedford Road. Just wanted to thank you, Council, for your continued correspondence via email in regards to the rain events that we've had since our last city council meeting, particularly rain events on June 22nd, 23rd, and also the 27th. As you saw from our emailed pictures on those messages, that water was quite significant, especially on June 27th, and a very big cause for concern for both me and my husband. So I ask, Council, now is the time. I ask that you please vote on Ordinance 78-2015 tonight, to show us residents in the ledge in North Bedford area, that you can appreciate our stormwater situation and you wish to finally do something about it. As I've expressed in the past, I am concerned about additional stormwater running through our back property with expansions being done on 271, and then also updates that are going to be happening on Ledge Road. I don't know if that, if anybody's driven down North Freeway Drive, I just noticed the other day that there's a new green pipe sticking out of dirt underneath the new bridge that's being put up by 271. I can only assume that's for water, and water usually runs downhill, and that means more water for us. The city cannot continue to route stormwater, or I guess ODOT. They cannot continue to route stormwater down ledge and through my back property without some sort of proper management and maintenance to that stormwater. So again, I ask, Council, now's the time. Please consider that ordinance, 78-2015, so that stormwater at ledge in North Bedford can finally be properly addressed and managed. Thank you very much.
Very good. Patrick Kearney?
Hello. Again, I'm Patrick Kearney, 8257 Kirk Atlanta in Sagamore Hills. I was here to mainly just introduce myself and offer to be a consultant and to help get this ordinance passed through on the donation bins. It was our company who originally brought it to the forefront, and I just wanted to reiterate to the city that it's not our intention to paint the town yellow or anything like that with these bins. We take great pride in what we do, and the service is very important to us, especially being here in my backyard and a member of the community. Warehouse is right here in Solon. We have a quick response. The initial ordinance that's proposed, I did make some comments, I shared with the mayor and the law director. There's a fine line of being too restrictive and then too vague, and I've worked in many cities throughout the United States with regulation, and I just, again, wanted to offer my expertise, if you will, in the industry. And I'll be here for the meetings throughout, and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. I did have property that had your boxes on it, and you were always very prompt in coming to pick up the litter, because a lot of people, instead of putting what should be put in the box, they put it next to the box. And that's one of our major concerns with that. So we need that cooperation from your company, that when we call, we get that instant response that I used to get, so.
Sure, sure, absolutely. It's important to us as well, and we take it a step further, and we analyze each box, and if it's a continued nuisance, a continued problem, we move it, we relocate it, we do surveillance, there's a lot of different options that we can do to.
What happens to the things that are inside the box?
All the donations are collected, and they're processed here in our Solon warehouse, and then they're sold for revenue in which we support all the different programs, so many to get into detail on, but our website, we fully disclose everything as far as our financials. But we are a nonprofit organization. We're heavily involved with other nonprofits, especially in the area. A good example is the VFW here in Northfield. You know, that bin that's next to ours? We donated that bin. We refurbished one of our old ones. We had our decal company put decals on it, so they can collect American flags and dispose them the proper way. They had a need there, and we helped them fill that need. And that's just one example. We partner with a lot of different organizations as well. And again, we believe that people are donating these charitable items out of the goodness of their heart, and we should continue that as a charitable item, and giving back and making sure that people who need it get it.
Well, as usual, there's always a few that spoil it for everybody, but I think your company's always been top-notch.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, next is Jody Wolf. Jody?
Hello, my name is Jody Wolf. I live at 8700 Wiltshire Drive, and tonight I would like to say that I am in support of the ATV ordinance as it's, as it's written. I specifically am in favor of the not riding ATVs on less than one acre of property. We have a situation where there's an ATV racetrack right next to our property, and there's our ramp, and there are three ATV vehicles running for several hours throughout the day. My concern with this is that it's going to decrease property value for, for all the families in Macedonia who live on property that's less than one acre. Also, there are safety issues. This is happening right next to the sidewalk, and I know that we want to keep people safe that are, we have a lot of walkers in our neighborhood, and I feel that we all have the right to enjoy our property, and this has made it very difficult for us to enjoy our property, as well as our neighbors. And so, I, I know that we all have rights to enjoy our property, and that this has been brought up as a reason not to have the legislation, but I feel that it's when those rights are abused that it becomes a problem. And so, I, I think that the ordinance would help us, would help us preserve our rights to enjoy our property, and if we could come up with some kind of compromise where, where maybe they can still, people can still enjoy their property, but people can stay safe, and we will not be decreasing our property values.
Very good.
Thank you.
Sylvia and I are talking about having discussions with you, and Jody and I have discussions pretty regularly about this issue.
I know that we've, we've kind of asked a group of people to provide input.
Sure.
And I think, it sounds like she's articulate and.
Well, she has been getting a copy of everything that we get, and we do right along. So Jody is very much involved. Thank you for coming down and talking.
Thank you. And we, we've tried the noise, looking at the noise, and I appreciate that point that was brought up, that my understanding is the noise is very hard to measure, and it would be very difficult to enforce. So that's, that was my first thought as well, is that, well, this should be covered by a noise ordinance. But I actually called a couple times last summer, hoping that the noise could, could make this stop, and it wasn't very effective.
One of the things the police, excuse me, one of the things the police have found with noise is that it's very easy to measure noise that is sustained, but when you have ATVs or any off-road vehicles, the noise is constantly fluctuating, because as they're going around a lot, they go slower, they go faster. It's not that sustained noise. So I know our police, Vince, maybe you can even speak to this, find that very difficult to measure.
You know, and 95 decibels is, is very loud, and we do have a decimal meter. Chief Golden and I are both trained on it, and we have tried for years to properly measure based off what the ordinance says, the adjacent property or roadway, and you would be surprised, even a two-stroke motorcycle doesn't hit that decimal, yet it's loud. So the other issue we have is, they're racing back and forth as fast as they can go. When a cop car pulls up, now they're doing 5 mile an hour. You know what I mean?
Yes, I get you.
It's very difficult.
But anyway, thanks for coming to.
Jody, can I ask you, if you would be kind enough to leave me either an email address or some information, I'd like to talk to you offline.
Certainly, I'll email you this evening.
All right, next on the list is David Lacy. David?
Hi, David Lacy, 8598 North Bedford Road. I'm also here about the ATV ordinance, and I think we do need an ordinance, because you can get out of control with a bunch of kids getting together on a small lot, but I think that we can come up with a compromise to where everybody gets to ride. It should be your pro- It should be your property, only you ride on your property, something to that nature, or ride by permit, so that it's permitted on your property with certain restrictions as far as time allotments.
It's going to be, we're looking at everything, and there is going to be some more.
I mean, because you don't want to take all the rights away from all the residents.
We don't, but we don't want to have situations where people are really abusive.
Well, and that's the problem. You have one group that does that, and then it's a liability risk. Like she said, you have four or five children riding around on a half-acre lot. You know, that's a liability issue for everybody, including the people walking down the street. But, you know, if you do it by permit, then you're only permitted to run in this property.
I see your question, I do see your point.
And then if you do it in allotments, you grab a permit, then you tell your time restrictions that you want to ride in, say, from 10:00 to 10:30, or 10:00 to 10:20. That way, if you get a call, then at least it's enforceable.
Right.
Because they know, hey, 2:00 you didn't put that down, or you're riding for three hours now, and you're not even in your allotted time zone. So it's just another compromise to the ordinance.
And thanks for supplying ideas to us. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Next on the list is Barb DeLuigos. Barb?
I'm Barb DeLuigos, and I live at 8388 Valley View Road. I had three things I wanted to talk about quickly. One is the ATV thing. My kids had ATVs, they had dirt bikes, they had minibikes. You have to use common sense, and it's a shame a lot of people don't have common sense anymore. I mean, my kids rode, not when the kids next door were taking a nap or something. The neighbor kids rode in my yard because their parents didn't want their grass ruined. And my yard is so convenient, we just open both gates on both sides and they can go around. Show me a noisy kid, and I'll show you a busy kid. A kid that's not breaking in, a kid who's not doing something wrong. Also, especially when these littler ones are starting out, you don't want to take them to a professional place to ride because they need your input. What did I find about good things that, because my kids were really into this? When my oldest son was taking driver's training, and they got stuck in the parking lot at Chrysler in a snowbank, the girl, this other girl drove in the snowbank, the teacher couldn't get them out, and Scott said, "Move over, I know how to get us out of the snow." He... This is good for these kids to be doing something like this. It sure beats sitting in the house. All right, enough on that. And then... On this ordinance 64, an ordinance for their submission to the electors of the city, changing the number of votes for removal from a member of council from four to three. When did we give council the authority to remove a member of council? I remember being on a recall. We voted, everybody in, you state your case, put it on the ballot, and we will recall and vote out whoever we want. This isn't up to you people. You're elected people. Why did this all change?
May I address?
Yes.
It didn't change. This is, I was on charter review. This part of the charter has always been in the charter review, but if you remember four years ago, the charter was changed, reducing council from six to five, and this part of the section wasn't changed at that time. So now it requires a supermajority, and so the intent is to make this consistent with the other parts of the change in the charter. It's always, it's always been that way, since the charter was started.
When did the charter start?
When did we become a city?
1971.
Okay, then why, when Karen Blair was on council, some of you remember?
We do. There's two processes to remove, two processes by which a charter, a member of council can be removed. It can be removed by a recall, or under certain circumstances, it can be done by a majority of members of council for certain acts. It's not a change.
Well, I'm very against this, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
If we elected you to serve on council, we should be the ones electing you to not serve on council, period. It shouldn't be up to any of you. You know, this one said something I don't like, so, pss, let's get them off today. Right. Oh, and one other thing about the ATV thing, to keep it 250 feet away from your house, how do you suggest we get it back into the garage? You know, you gotta give thought when you're writing out all this stuff. I remember when everybody had the big dish, the big dish in their yard, oh, this is great. Well, we don't like how it looks. None of you were on council or mayor or anything. They wrote, and they approved this, that it had to be surrounded completely with trees and bushes taller than the dish. Now how did you expect to get a signal? And you can't put a dish on your roof. That was the other thing. Where would you suggest I put it? In the basement? You know, think before you make these rules.
All right, thank you. Next on the list is Scott Robby. Scott?
Hard act to fight. I'm sorry for laughing, because that was good. I mean, a lot of thoughts got to be put into a lot of processes, you know, that you do. All right, I'm here over the stormwater. I was here before, you know, I'm the one that brought up, you can have the acres back there, put your retainer pond in. Rumors of buying houses? I'm sorry, 26 years I lived in my home. I got parents that live up top of the hill, my parents are way up in age, that's why I moved out of the military, moved here to be close to my parents when they did get old. I grew up, went to Nordonia schools, never, I'm not going to sell my home to do what you're going to do. My purpose, my understanding is, if you want to buy homes to cure this problem, you got the money to buy the homes, that means you have the money to run and do this solution I gave you. Okay? I gave you an acre of land to put your retainer pond in, if you're going to spend $180,000 to buy five homes each, then you got the $180,000 from five homes to do the work on the properties. Put it into all the water solutions down here. Because obviously, nothing against council, but you don't pay attention because all these years, in the last 10 years, FEMA alone has turned around and changed the zoning down where we live, including the 20th of, end of June, has been zoned to a higher water level now than it's ever been in the past. The water didn't just appear, it's been added down into that area. Everybody thought the subsidiary was the easiest way to get rid of water off the top of the hill, instead of Indian Creek. So we'll use the subsidiary to put all the water in, and just tell the people, basically, move, buy your house, dose your house to fix the problem? I'm sorry, Macedonia created the problem, guys. You built homes at the top of the hill, you run the water down the hill. You build all the companies on Freeway Drive, you run the water down to the hill. You put a new interstate section in, what are you going to do with the water? Run it down the hill. Where you put it all? Into the subsidiary. Back years ago, you dozed it, you cleaned it all out and everything else, it handled the water for a little bit, but now, I measured the other day, we have four inches left of creek. That's how deep of left before it goes over the bank. All that's completely flooded, I pulled tires out of my creek. You know, I pulled big logs from people's fireplaces that just, you know, washed down the hill. All that stuff winds up because there's no place for it to go. Back years ago, you did check the ordinances, you were supposed to redo the piping underneath the road, because the pipe is too small to handle the amount of water put into there. That zoning just disappeared. The work was never done, the money never showed up to do the work. You know, and then I got told last week, I'm not to get upset. Okay? I'm sorry, to watch the way council moves and the way things are being done through all these years, and you go back a check, the money was put there, or the solution was put there to correct the problem, then it all disappeared. People come complain again, you'll dredge it. See, there's always been the problem, you just don't want to do the final step to do the solution. I mean, I can't go any further than what I'm doing. I gave you a piece of land that will cover any kind of water problem that comes down that hill. Just dig the hole, route the creek, and save everybody's home that lives in Macedonia down in the valley. Simple deal. If you can buy the homes, you can obviously turn around and dig the pond. I mean, I don't want to seem like I am upset about it, I just don't think it's moving fast enough to cure the problem. You know, because before the flooding zoning was set, my house was never included into it, because my house sits too far forward, everybody else's house sits back closer to the creek. Under this new zoning now, my mortgage company sends me a letter, now I got to turn around and put flood protection on my house. 25 years never happened, now I got to have. That's because of how much water you've allowed to be dumped into that subsidiary. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you, Scott. Next we have Sandra Reha. Sandra?
Having read the bulletin today, I have some input. My name is Sandra Reha, and I live at 8984 Cherokee. I have lived there for 50 years. I'm the house on the curb. I get all the water. All the water. The creek is about 180 feet from the back of my house. Water from this whole development comes down a ditch beside my house and goes into this creek, and the creek keeps getting higher and higher and higher. And there's a large sinkhole at the end of the ditch that goes all the way down. If a child fell in there, they would never get, I would never be able to get out of there. It's just a hole. I've had water approximately three times. I have a five-inch piece of wood in my basement door, so it's that high. I've had water come up that high from the creek. But I've only had water in the basement three times, I'm lucky. The fear is always there. Mr. DeCata, DeC, Mr.? He's not here, so he can't hear me. Deacon, whatever his name is. He's a good guy. He's been to my place several times. When it rains, he'll come down to see what's going on when there's a bad storm. There's a lot of overgrowth on both sides of the creek down there. We don't have a little creek, we've got a big creek. Thank you for your time, and just want to be sure that the property that your people are including about measuring and all this stuff, that my property, a lot farther than their property, is included in this quote or whatever you're talking about doing. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not a comedian, really.
All right. All right, so that concludes our public comments for this evening. So we're going to move forward with our regular agenda and go into pending and/or new legislation, starting with ordinance number 52-2015.
Mayor, for ordinance number 52, 2015, I'd like to hold it at second reading, please.
In ordinance amending, amending section 37503 of the codified ordinances relating to snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles, and all-purpose vehicles.
Mayor, one of the things we've talked about is, you know, we've had people come forth, and it's a community effort to try and figure out how we do it. Personally, when I read it, it's like, so with all the can't drive here, can't drive there, can't drive there, I didn't even know if you even had an ability to drive any of your vehicles on your property of an acre or more. What I have asked the mayor is that when this proposal for change comes back, that we give it to council for a work session, and then we have another public hearing, because it's important to hear from all of you if this proposed change for this ordinance with the ATVs is acceptable or not. The laws are created for all of you, not just for one or two.
Very good. Moving on to ordinance numbers 61, 2015.
Mayor, I offer ordinance 61, 2015, for its third reading by title only.
In ordinance, providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, a proposed amendment to section 301 of the charter requiring a mayoral primary for the May of the election year in the event there are more than two mayoral candidates.
And what's your pleasure?
Move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance 61, 2015.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
No.
Ms. Tully?
I really took a look at this to try and figure out why we're doing this after all these years. Why would we require a primary? What has changed in all the years? You know, it's saying, so we only have two, we're nonpartisan, so we're not Republican, we're not Democrat, so we don't have a primary by which political affiliation you have. The presidential election has more than two people on the ballot, so I'm not sure I understand the philosophy behind this. The other thing is, if you have a special election for a primary, and there's nothing else on that, we pay for it. You pay for it out of your taxes. You pay for that primary. I'm a person of belief that whoever wants to run has the ability to run. If one wants to pull petitions and go out and get names, go for it. I also believe that, I'm just not understanding this, but the more I thought about it, and I had a couple conversations, if you do a primary, when do you, as a person, choose to run? You're going to have to choose the year before, because you got to pull your petitions in January and get them on the ballot for, which is usually two months before primary, which is in May. So if we're going to do that, should we then have any council members who are considering doing that resign so that they're focused on their election instead of worrying about the city? How do you draw the line there? I personally think for a residential city of 12,000 people, it's never been an issue before. My vote is no.
Moving on, ordinance number 60.
Don, don, excuse me, Don, I'd like to say just one thing about this particular one. A primary you don't pay for, and you don't pay for a general election, you only pay for a special election. I just wanted to make that correction.
That's not true.
You don't pay for a primary.
If you're the only thing on the ballot, trust me, we go through this every year, if you're the only thing on the ballot, the community pays. Am I correct?
You pay in all elections, you pay a portion of it, it depends on how much it is. Yes, you do pay.
Ordinance number 62, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 62, 2015, for its third reading by title only, please.
In ordinance, providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, a proposed amendment to section 303 of the charter, changing the number of members of council needed to override a mayoral veto from two-thirds to four members.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance number 62, 2015, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Ms. T, Mr. Molnar?
Just to provide some clarity, I'm going to defer to the legal department on this, but current day to override a mayoral veto is what number of council members?
It's four, but.
It's four, but it's based on two-thirds, which is a fractional part. So it's a clerical correction that is consistent with what the actual number is now.
So I guess the question I have, and when reading this, that was my assumption, does this need to go to the voters for that to fix this?
Unfortunately, it does.
Okay, I vote yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance number sixty-three, two thousand fifteen.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-three, two thousand fifteen, for its third reading by title only, please.
In ordinance, providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, a proposed amendment to sections three oh three and four oh three of the charter changing the presiding officer at the meeting of council from the mayor to the president of council.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number sixty-three, two thousand fifteen, please. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand fifteen, for its third reading by title only.
In ordinance, providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, a proposed amendment to sections four thirteen of the charter changing the number of votes for removal of a member of council from four to three.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move we pass and post ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand fifteen, according to law.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
You know, thinking about this one and listening to Mrs. Delugos, and I'll defer to the legal department, again, if we were to remove this completely where council could not remove a member, how would we go about doing that?
Council can introduce charter amendments anytime for the voters to consider.
So that wouldn't have to go to the ballot for that type of change?
It would.
It would?
Yes.
And in thinking about this, and obviously the climate of this council currently, I think that something like this is toxic, I think it's the worst idea that is on here for all of this. There is no way I would ever vote for this, my vote is no.
Ms. Tully?
Ms. Delugos, the reason they can be removed is stated in here in the charter. Gross misconduct, malfeasance, violation of oath of office, persistent failure to abide by the rules of council. Some of that's pretty much open for interpretation. Malfeasance isn't, that's legal. You don't have a lot of, gross misconduct, that's pretty much handled by the legal. But when you put that out of five people, three can say, you didn't follow the rules of council? You're right. Also, there is the opportunity, there is someone on this DS that has been elected that you believe should not continue on this DS. That's what a recall is all about for you, the residents. I vote no.
Let me just make one comment here, this is purely a, it's more of a clerical correction, too. This one was, we previously had six members and it was requiring four. And this is saying we have five members and now we're three. That's basically all this was supposed to be, and it was discussed that way in charter review, I did sit through that.
It may be mathematical, but when you get the power into three people's hands,
Well, okay, just making a point.
You gotta think about it, why not make it four? That you have to have all four people, because the fifth person doesn't get the vote. Obviously, the person in train-
Well, that would mean you'd have to have unanimous-
It's no.
None of you should have the power. I'm sorry, I'm speaking, but none of you should have the power. We gave you the power because we elected you into there. And if you present your case to us, we have the power to remove you by voting. I'm not people voting to remove you. Maybe we like the way you're working.
Ordinance number sixty-five, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance sixty-five, two thousand fifteen, for a third reading by title only. Second.
The leg got me.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Yeah. In ordinance, providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, proposed amendment to article nine of the charter by adding a separate section for the appointment of the prosecutor within the law department with duties.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance sixty-five, two thousand fifteen, according to law.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes, and I think there should be a clarification, only because of the ballot language is amended to add new sections for the appointment of the prosecutor by the mayor. But the explanation we have is that the mayor shall appoint a city prosecutor. There's a difference in how it's handled today, and the charter review commission felt that that should be handled differently, so it's a yes. But if you read the ballot language, kinda ambiguous.
Moving on, ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand fifteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance sixty-six for its third reading by title only.
In ordinance, providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, a proposed amendment to section ten oh one of the charter by changing the composition of the planning and zoning commissions by removing the mayor and the appointed member of council and replacing them with the electors of the city.
And what's your pleasure?
Move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance sixty-six, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Ms. Darrow, I'm sorry.
Yes, I said-
My words are kind of getting goofy here. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance sixty-seven, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-seven, two thousand fifteen, for its third reading by title only, please.
Go ahead, second.
I don't need one, it's just-
Thank you.
In ordinance, providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, proposed amendment to sections ten oh two and four oh nine of the charter by removing the plating authority from the planning commission and making city council the plating authority and requiring that all recommendations of the planning commission be submitted to council for approval.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I moved that, um, I know, Mr. Mayor, I moved that we pass and post ordinance number sixty-seven, two thousand fifteen, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
No.
Ms. Tully?
I'm gonna give one real quick explanation, because traditionally, people think all charter review amendments go right to the ballot. The ordinance beforehand was explained by a councillor Engel sixty-six, where we remove the mayor and the appointed member of council to the planning commission, will then take the politics out of that committee. I agree with that. This gives the plating authority to council for approval. That puts the politics right back into it. You can't have it both ways. And the concern then can be, would you have the illusion of preferential treatment? I vote no. You can't have it two ways, it's one way or the other.
Ordinance sixty-eight, two thousand fifteen.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance sixty-eight, two thousand fifteen, for its third reading by title only, please.
In ordinance, providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, proposed amendment to sections ten oh one and eleven oh one of the charter by requiring that one member of the planning commission serve as a non-voting member of the board of zoning appeals.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd like to ask that we post and pass according to law, ordinance number sixty-eight, two thousand fifteen, please. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
No, I just wanna make a comment here. I think these two boards should be kept separate, I don't think that, in fact, I think that's going to be counter to what we should be doing, which the BZA should be totally separate from planning.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes, this person is a non-voting member, so there really, there is a guidance.
Moving on, ordinance sixty-nine, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-nine, two thousand fifteen, for its third reading by title only.
In ordinance, providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, a proposed amendment to sections fourteen oh three A of the charter changing the number of votes for removal of the building commissioner from five-sixths of the members of council to four votes.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance number sixty-nine, two thousand fifteen, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Before I vote, I'd like to thank all the members of the charter review that showed up and worked on the charter review. And, and they worked, they showed up and they put a lot of time and energy into this, and they're the ones that recommended all these come before council to go to the voters now. And I voted yes, and I'm gonna continue to vote yes, because I think it's up to the people and that these go to the ballot and let the people decide how they want the charter to go forward. I vote yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand fifteen, for a second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Thank you.
In ordinance, authorizing, oh, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with GBD Group for professional engineering and surveying services regarding the Ledge and Bedford Road drainage study.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand fifteen, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Long time coming, first step to resolve for you folks, and it's gonna be a slow, drawn process, I don't want you to, it's not gonna be quick, I'm telling you that now. But absolutely, yes.
Ms. Tully?
I've had the commitment to do this for I don't know how long. We also have a copy of the map, if you'd like to see where this study will be. It actually, Nick Feeney probably has one that's not as dark as the Xerox one, so that you can see it encompasses uphill, downhill, and all around. As someone who lived at Navajo eons ago and got to ride a canoe down Navajo once, I don't want to see that happen again, it's absolutely overdue, yes.
And, you know, when we get into something like this, just as a passing comment, when you're working upstream, sometimes you actually help things downstream. So we might cure a problem in one place and end up curing it in three places, so it's a good thing. Moving on, ordinance number eighty-three dash, I'm sorry, eighty-two dash two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number eighty-two, two thousand fifteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Oh, I have to read it, huh? Pick a book? Book.
In ordinance, confirming the appointment by the mayor of Lee Kaufman to the position with two Os, to full-time police and fire dispatcher.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance number eighty-two, two thousand fifteen, according to law.
Second.
What's your pleasure?
Ms. Darrow?
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Okay, Leah's here this evening, we welcome you, Leah, thank you for doing what you're doing, and we look forward to working with you. All right. Moving on, ordinance number eighty-three, two thousand fifteen.
Mayor, I offer ordinance eighty-three, twenty fifteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
In ordinance, confirming the appointment by the mayor of Bruce Genefees to the position of part-time police and fire dispatch.
And what's your pleasure?
Move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance eighty-three, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance eighty-four, two thousand-
Before we do that, and I think at Mr. Genefees, can we back up to eighty-two with Ms. Kaufman? Traditionally, we make them stand-ups, everybody can see, and they introduce who came with them. And you didn't do that, you skipped it, and we usually ask the police department or the fire department for any comments, so you gotta back up, sorry.
No free passes.
Well, actually, Leah preferred not to do that, so I'm sorry, Leah, I tried, okay.
But maybe just introduce who you brought.
Okay, I brought my son Scott with me.
Okay.
And Janelle, who I'm saying we're hills, my old boss. And Bruce, of course.
All right, very good.
Now I'd like to offer ordinance number eighty-four, two thousand fifteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
In ordinance, confirming the appointment by the mayor of Bruce Genefees to position of part-time corrections officer.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd like to ask that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number eighty-four, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
I hope to never meet you in this position, but yes.
He doesn't look that unfriendly.
All right. Bruce, would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the council, and to all the members of the police department for giving me this opportunity.
And we look forward to working with you, Bruce.
Thank you, sir.
All right, ordinance number eighty-five, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number eighty-five, two thousand and fifteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
In ordinance, confirming the appointment by the mayor of Brian Freehoff to the position of part-time corrections officer.
And what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post ordinance number eighty-five, two thousand fifteen, according to law.
Okay, second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Another person I don't want to meet in their position officially, but absolutely, yes.
Is Brian here at the seat movement?
No, Brian couldn't make it to the seat.
Okay, very good. Moving on, ordinance number eighty-six, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance eighty-six, two thousand fifteen, for a first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An emergency, uh, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter in, authorizing the city engineer to solicit proposals for the emergency pavement repair at North Freeway Drive.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we post and pass according to law, ordinance eighty-six, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance number eighty-seven, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number eighty-seven, two thousand and fifteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
In ordinance, authorizing the mayor and fire chief- An ordinance authorizing the mayor and fire chief to prepare specifications and bids for a new medic unit and advertise their four.
And what's your pleasure?
May I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 87, 2015, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Chief, could you say a few words, please?
Yeah, this will be a new medic unit. We're approximately 150 calls above last year at this time. We're replacing a 1997 medic unit.
Very good. Ordinance number 88, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 88, 2015, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an EMS billing services agreement with Life Force Management, Inc.
Moving on to ordinance 89, 2015.
I offer ordinance 89, 2015, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing an agreement with Cost Recovery Corps, LLC, in order to provide billing and related services regarding motor vehicle accidents.
And what's your, oops, I'm sorry, that was first. Ordinance number 91, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 90, 2015, for its first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Attorney General for delinquent debt collections.
Ordinance 91, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 91, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance appropriating money from the general fund to be transferred to Department of Fire Accounts 101-222-5240 and 101-222-5580.
And what's your pleasure?
First of all, the reason we're transferring funds, this was the uniforms for the fire department that I noticed was over budget at 150 percent. This is to make that line item whole. So, Mayor, I would offer that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 91, 2015, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance 92, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 92, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance appropriating money from the general fund and to establish a new account entitled Holiday Fund 101-170-5625.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance, I'd like to offer ordinance number 92, 2015, to pass and post it according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
This is to take our Memorial Park after we're going through all of the work doing, that we're doing to refurbish it, and we're finally going to make it look like other communities with holiday decorations. So thank you, council, for that. Ordinance number 93, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 93, 2015, for a first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Okay, an ordinance making appropriations in order to facilitate various operating expenses year-to-date.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we post, or we pass and post according to law ordinance 93, 2015.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance 93 passes, and I thank council because this will allow us to pay the bills for fixing all the roads in Macedonia. Ordinance number 94, 2015.
I offer ordinance 94, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance appropriating funds necessary for dispatch upgrades.
And what's your pleasure?
We'll pass and post according to law ordinance 94, 2015.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes, I'd just like to comment that this has already been reimbursed by Sagamore Hills, and we are simply moving money to make sure that we can purchase these upgrades.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
This is a good step in the right direction for regionalization, and now we have dispatch in Macedonia for Macedonia and Northfield and Sagamore. Ordinance number 95, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 95, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance appropriating funds for the use by the Parks and Recreation Department in order to cover necessary expenses year-to-date.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number 95, 2015, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance 96, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 96, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance appropriating a fund transfer from general fund to 101-110-5575 for citywide server upkeep and other citywide computer maintenance.
Ordinance 97, 2000.
We have to vote.
Oh.
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 96, 2015, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Sorry about that, I'm getting swept away here with all these ordinances. Ordinance 97, now, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 97, 2015, for first reading by title only.
Second.
Just one reading, right?
Oh, we did first reading, okay.
An ordinance completely repealing existing ordinance, section 117119 of the codified ordinances, donations boxes prohibited, and adopting a new ordinance, 117119, which regulates donation boxes and creates a permitting process.
And what's your pleasure?
It's a first reading.
Oh, that's first reading. Resolution number 98, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number 98, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading, please, by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A resolution declaring the month of August 2015, Sunday Kids Month in the county of Summit.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post resolution number 98, 2015, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And we did it. That's all the legislation for this evening, unless we have any other motions or legislative action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion directing you to obtain quotes to obtain an appraiser for the purposes of appraising the Gabriel property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, we'll move on to correspondence to the clerk.
Well, I do have a few. Oh, it's not that bad, come on. I know I stumble over words. Come on. Dear Mayor and council members, on behalf of the Board of Trustees of Sagamore Township, I would like to take this opportunity to commend Chief John Golden and his administrative staff for our recent regionalization of dispatch centers. Due to the recent unforeseen instances, our dispatch center was in an emergency situation, and we could not staff nor equip our dispatch center to what we felt the residents of Sagamore Hills have come to expect. Our chief contacted Chief Golden on June 15th, 2015, in order to ascertain if a recently discussed regionally, eh, yeah, both the centers could occur on July 1, 2015. It is our understanding that Chief Golden and his staff worked diligently in order to accommodate this switch over. Today, our police department is now being dispatched by the Macedonia Police Department's Communication Center. We, as the Board of Trustees, would like to recognize the efforts put in this assistance of neighboring community, in the assistance of the neighboring community in need. Please issue a heartfelt thanks to Chief Golden, Lieutenant Yakapovich, and Ms. Sonia Becker. We ask that you include this letter in their personnel files, and it's signed by Paul Schweitzer, the chair, on behalf of all the other trustees. This is to Officer Neil. My name is DeKlan Ferry Senior. I am a deputy sheriff with Franklin County Sheriff Office in Columbus. On May 17th, you came to the assistance of my son and his grandmother and aunt on I-271 in Macedonia. My sister-in-law told me that your interaction and how, about your interaction and how she was very impressed with your professionalism and caring for them. I wish to thank you as a fellow law enforcement officer for coming to their assistance, but more importantly, as a parent, that you went out of your way to help my family. Thank you so very much, and God bless you and the fellow members of the Macedonia Fire Department. Dear Mayor Cookta, my husband and I would like you to know how impressed we were with the Macedonia Police Department when my husband was involved in an auto accident on Route 82 and Summer Road. The responders could not have been more efficient, courteous, and just plain nice. Officer Madaj, Officer, I'm having a hard time with his name right now. Matej, J.A., K.A. You said.
I, I'm.
All right. And I can barely say it, but it's the only one she remembers, is the only name I can remember. Matejic, Matejic.
Matika.
Duh, thank you, and I'm, and you're all watching me here, and the people across the universe are watching me struggle.
How could someone with a name like Yakapovich give you hassles over that?
I know, but I know.
I was waiting for the first syllable, and I was going to try to help.
I know, I know, it sounds like word game. At any rate, let's not be disrespectful. The ambulance driver was also very nice, and I want to thank everyone in the police department and the fire department. Marian LaPerma. Sorry about that. But thank you, that's it.
All right. Moving on to the mayor's report. You know, some people were calling my office yesterday to ask about the Channel 5 news trucks parked at City Hall. I'd really like to thank Channel 5 because their Crime Stoppers program's great. The trucks were here to do a segment on pickpockets in Macedonia. They show security tapes on the news, and they're very helpful to our police in apprehending the thieves. Yes, we do have crime in Macedonia. Kudos also to our police department for using any measure possible to help protect us. Road construction, let me give you a brief synopsis of some of the things so you know where we stand. The Interstate 271 project is moving along on schedule and is due to be completed in October 2016. So we got a while to go here. The new northbound ramp is still scheduled for completion on September 30th of this year. There are possible delays associated with the 271 jobs. Some of it's because of the lack of cooperation from Norfolk Southern, as usual. You know, we have to have a break in truck traffic in order to set the beams for the new bridges. In order to do that, train traffic must be interrupted. They are very reluctant, and I'm using that word instead of some others, to do that, and train traffic unfortunately does have the right of way. So we might even be able to get the job sooner, done sooner, if we would just have more cooperation. South Freeway Drive is still experiencing pole relocation by First Energy. Route 82 construction on the west end of town has been milled and filled with the intermediate course. Now, this course that they put down, that's not done, that's curing. And while that's curing, ODOT is doing some assorted jobs, like fixing utilities or fixing the sidewalks. And we don't know exactly when the final course will be going down. We haven't been told a completion date, but it'll even be nicer than it is right now. Route 82 construction on the east end of town is scheduled to commence on September 7th of this year. That construction will take approximately a year. Now, that's over there from Shepherd Boulevard going east. Pavement recycling has been completed on the B Streets. Further work is being done before the final course is laid. I do get reports of things like chuckles showing up or someone leaving us in the paving. That's why they let it cure. So these problems come to view, and then we can fix them before we put the final course down. Bid documents are being prepared for our 2015 crack ceiling program. The budget for that is $50,000, and we will complete as many streets as possible for that amount. So we do some sealing, and then where we let off last year, we start off this year and do as much as we can, and then next year, we continue from there. The Ledge Road Bridge is scheduled to be repaired The Ledge Road Bridge is scheduled to be repaired, starting no later than Monday, July twenty-seventh. That will mean Ledge Road will be closed for seventy-five days, starting on that date, so be aware. And then, of course, the Sioux Lane culvert replacement is complicated. You would think, what's complicated? You just dig up the street, put in a new culvert, and you're done. Well, unfortunately, there are sewer pipes that go underneath there, so when there are sewer pipes, there has to be coordination with Summit County DOES, which is our sewer people. They will be working with us, hopefully, but right now, we're kind of waiting on them to give us some help so we can get this going. So, I don't have any information on the starting date for you on that yet. As far as our service department, a few talking points, Memorial Park gazebo rehabilitation, they have new flooring, new supports, the decking is completed, new lighting has been ordered. Gloria Eileen Stormwater Restorations, graded with clean filter to prepare for topsoil and grass seed, so we're almost there. Gardens of Highland, tree removal is underway. That's where we had a lot of trees dying because trees were planted where they probably shouldn't have been. You know, a tree needs to have room around it, and the tree lawns there are very small, and the trees unfortunately that were planted there died. So, now we're in the process of removing, and then we'll be replacing. Sioux Road is to remain closed, and that hole that has been there is doubled in size, so we could almost swallow a car there already. And then, don't forget, folks, we have paper shredding going on this July eleventh, that's this weekend, from nine AM to twelve PM. So, Saturday morning, you can bring a total of, and a limit of, ten shopping bags, and that's it per car. It'll be located at City Hall, we have a sign out front right now inviting you to bring your stuff here to get rid of. And you just enter the driveway right off Valley Bureau. And that concludes my report tonight, and we'll move right into committee reports.
Mr. Mayor, there'll be a planning commission meeting on Monday, August seventeenth, at five-thirty.
Are there any other committee reports? Hearing none, we're gonna go to department reports, and it looks like we're running a little bit light over there today, but we had some people with other obligations, and we were going to be in recess, but we had this meeting. So, we'll start with you tonight, Nick.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to touch upon your statement about the Sioux culvert. We're at a point where we are close to wrapping up those engineering design documents, and we'd like to go out for bid as soon as possible. Two outstanding items to date, as you mentioned, one is Summit DOES, we're looking for a little bit of cooperation, and we need their approval with the way we have it designed right now. Hope to get that soon. In addition to that, we have to deal with Cleveland Water. We've also got a water line under the culvert. It's a little bit easier to move because you can lower pressure pipe systems. The sanitary sewer posed a bigger challenge for us, but we're waiting on coordination approval from both of those entities. As soon as we have it, we'll hit the streets with the bid packages and get prices for that work. I'd also like to thank council for passing the two items on the agenda tonight, one toward the North Bedford and Ledge drainage study. We look forward to working with the city on resolving the issues there, and also for passing the North Freeway Emergency Pavement Repair Package. We'll get that in contractors' hands next week, and hopefully get some prices over the next fourteen days and get that pavement repaired. Thank you.
Nick, could I ask you, what has happened with the OLG situation?
Uh, the basin is under design right now.
And we're still negotiating?
Correct.
All right. All right, Tim, what you have for us?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, Vince?
I'd just like to thank you, Mayor, and council, for confirming the appointment of the three employees for the police department. We're happy to have them coming aboard.
Very good. Is there any unfinished business this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Nick, did you forget to make a motion? You were gonna make a motion, and I was gonna second? About the computers?
Oh, I'm sorry. Long night. I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, to initiate a IT assessment of all the city's electronic equipment and internet and everything, so I think we need to go out and look for companies to do that, to begin that process.
Okay, I second that.
Sorry, thanks for reminding me.
That's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any other unfinished business?
The trees, let me, one quick comment. You know, we had our arborist here who talked about the trees that were up at Memorial Park. He is willing to come out if you have concerns about trees in your own property, and I bring that up because the neighbor has found they have ten to fifteen ash trees. We have, I think, five to seven, and then the neighbor next to us on the other side also. But if you have concern as if a tree is ready to go or not go, you know, please let the city know, and Tom will be glad to come out and tell. You can really tell the arbor, or the ash trees, because they look like they're ready to go, but there may be others in your yard that you need to have taken care of, and he is willing to offer his services.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Also, I'm getting a lot of calls up by Sugar Bush, there's a lot of residents that like to know what's going on with some of the parks, and when they're gonna start getting to be finished here, because nobody's working on them.
Well, I think it would be a good idea, maybe, if you would call me where I could follow up on that for you.
Okay, well, all right. I just thought maybe you can find out, you know, so we can-
I know, but, I know there was a lot of cleanup that was supposed to occur.
All right. Any other unfinished business? Any new business?
I'd just like to make one additional comment to Mr. Havlicek's comments. We two went and saw the Trevan Wall, the Vietnam Wall. As a wife of a Vietnam veteran who served three tours, I actually got him to go, I didn't think he would. And it was very moving, and it was very well appreciated, and the Twinsburg VFW and the city of Twinsburg need to be commended for bringing that in. What a great weekend. And the Northfield VFW, I understood, paid for the fireworks that were conducted then. As well, Mrs. Logos, you missed it, they had a car show also. So, they had that also. Then on Sunday, my church, my church had services there, and they had the missing man ceremony. It's very, very emotional for me, because you look at the years, and you realize where you're at at that time, you know, from fifties to sixties to early seventies. It's very difficult to know that the people who went to high school didn't come home. So, Mr. Havlicek, that was very moving.
Just, may I make a comment?
Go ahead.
I went to the wall also, because I keep working a lot, not wanting to go, because I'm not sure if my motion could be. I finally went through a lot of my history, and found twenty-two names for Long Island Wall in the layoff in Persian, but I had more than services.
Wow. All right, is there any other unfinished business? New business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Josephine Roche.
Yeah, Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
And Ms. Telly?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming, come again.
Hi, Tom, bud. You all right?
Oh, yeah.
Hanging in there?
Yep.
Oh, my God. Happy birthday.
Yeah.
At least you get some of the money to get it all started, right? Said you can get a lot of stuff started, you got a lot of money. I, I went up to the fore. He's bad, but they also looked at Matt.
You don't even have to tell me.
She left her pocket.
Thank you very much.